Welcome. Welcome to Duluth Public Schools ISB 709 Regular Monthly School Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, August 20th, it is 6:35. And we're going to call this meeting to order, but again, I want to welcome all of you that are here. This is our monthly school board meeting. This is a meeting that we vote on resolutions and on action items. And every part of our school board meeting tonight has already met with committee meetings, committee of the whole meetings, discussions. We've had questions, we've had presentations. And so when we come to our school board meeting tonight, we have an agenda and we have a variety of things we're going to pass and have a little bit more discussion. But tonight is our regular scheduled meeting where we vote on the action items and the issues that came before us earlier this month. So welcome. I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Zabowski and she'll take over.
Member Banks?
Here.
Member Eater?
Present.
Member Lafferty?
Here.
Member Rothel?
Here.
Member Banks though?
Here.
I hear. Member Williams?
Here.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich?
Here.
Executive Director of HR and Operations Severance?
Here.
Board Executive Cat?
Here.
And School Board Student Rep Mia Patronas?
Here.
Awesome. Thank you all for coming. And again, you're going to see kind of some real intentional microphone usage over this meeting and probably for a few more meetings. We're really trying to solidify our technology here in this speaks meeting space. And we've had a variety of, you know, just things that needed to be worked out. And so, because we livestream and then we also load our meetings up onto YouTube. And what some in our community are sharing with us is that when they go to our YouTube site to listen to the meetings at a time that's convenient to them, which we really do encourage, that the audio is really poor. And when we move away from the mic, it doesn't carry with us. So you're going to probably see some carrying of the mics or just some reminders or remind each other to turn our mics on when we're in conversation. So we thank you for being able to be here with us and experience the technology challenges that we have. So I'm going to, the next, I'm going to ask us to rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Members of board have had the agenda in front of them for a few days and I've looked at it. There are no additions for tonight from Assistant Superintendent or Superintendent, no additions to agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So, member Banks approves our agenda a second?
Second.
Member Eater? All those in favor of approval of tonight's agenda say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item number five, school and community recognition. And I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Good evening and thank you. I have the Kern family. Actually, I have one Reagan Kern.
Do you have your mic up?
I do, and I'll try to let her closer.
Thank you.
No problem. Because I didn't have my computer.
Okay.
Dear members of board, tonight, I'm excited to recognize one of our many amazing Danville high school students, Reagan Kern. Reagan, a senior at Danville, was recently honored with the Triple Threat Award from the Independent Theater Trust Spotlight Education Program. This is an accomplishment that highlights her exceptional talent and dedication in performing arts, which shined most recently as our most watched, most liked, and most shared referendum video last year. Only four students earned the Triple Threat Award from Minnesota, and she's the only one from outside of the metro area. The Triple Threat is a well-known term in the performing arts, referring to a performer who can masterfully and beautifully sing, dance, and act. Reagan has demonstrated an impressive commitment to all three disciplines. We couldn't be more proud of her hard dedication and her hard work. As a recipient of this esteem to work, Reagan earned a trip, a trip to New York City to learn from top industry professionals. Congratulations, Reagan.
Thank you.
We couldn't be more proud of you, and we can't wait to see you in the next production at Danville. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We know you want to share something.
Oh, am I supposed to share something? Hello, everyone. Um, yeah, I don't mind preparing anything. Thank you for this recognition. Oh, my goodness. New York was so much fun, giving me the opportunity to be one of the only people outside of the metro to go out to the cities every day, travel the two and a half hours there, two and a half hours back for every street. Everything was a blast. Yeah, it was a good opportunity to represent not only Danville and Duluth, but even northern Minnesota, because I mean, I was the only one up in northern Minnesota. So, yeah, it's been an honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Lindsay, do you want to be in the picture?
No, I don't.
I need a nap. I need a nap. I need to take a dump. God, I want to. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so that completes our item number five, that school and community recognition. And again, we appreciate the staff here at the district service building and Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Bonds' office that really work hard to, you know, canvas and bring varieties of people in front of us for recognition, from students to staff to community members. So we really appreciate the work that is done to highlight good stuff going on in our district. It's always a pleasure. So that brings us to number six on our agenda, the report of Superintendent. And under that is three different reports. There's a report from our school student reps, there is the superintendent report, and then there is just a review of the scheduled meetings and events coming up next week. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Bonds. You know, I only did that once. It was laughable about when you whatever me. You have to question why. Where are you?
Sorry, I'm having a cast again. There it is. Yes? I'm starting to get a little, so, 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 I'm just, um, no, I'm just there. The, uh, so, once again, with our superintendent's report, we always like to start with our student reports because it gives us a glimpse into where our students are at, what they're doing, and we realize school hasn't started, and there are some things to share about yourself. Representative Patronas, if you'd like to share.
Right. I'll start by talking about student government. Last month, we held our annual overnight camping retreat, which is right at the last meeting. We were out camping with about 20 of us from the group. And we got head started on planning of our welcome week and homecoming dances and spirit weeks. So it was a really special bonding experience for all of us, and it got us really excited for the upcoming school year. Fall sports began practicing on August 12th. This includes our football team, which has a new head coach. He formerly coached at the collegiate level and now is working on transforming the program at East. Members of the team feel very excited for the season and the direction that their coach is taking them. Tomorrow, East is holding back-to-school jumpstart for all grades to receive class schedules and take school pictures. And from 1:00 to 5:00, there will be a club there where students can receive information of the many activities that East has to offer. Then orientation for incoming students is next week, and these incoming students get to meet their year-long mentors from the best called Hound Pack. Hound Pack is made up of many juniors and seniors who undergo a training session to wear and outfit freshmen up for the best possible experience. And that's about all I have for this month, where I'm excited to get back to school.
Thank you so much. And we're so excited to have our students back.
Yeah.
And I especially want to say thanks for the work that is done by the student leaders to prepare our students as they transition from one level to the next. You know, that can be a hard time for some of our freshmen and some of our sixth graders going into middle school. And I very appreciate that students are showing that leadership and also supporting the adults as we prepare for incoming students. So thank you. So regarding my sharing tonight, I have quite a bit to share, so I'll go moderately quickly. But if you have questions, feel free to slow me down. We went over our mission, vision, and core values during our listening session. But tonight's topics, we had our student reports. I want to share a little bit about last night's Unity in Our Community event. It was the third annual and it was awesome. Quite a few leadership updates and then some back-to-school updates. And then if there's anything else that you have questions on. So our Unity in the Community event, and all of you were there, all of our board members were represented last night at the Unity in Our Community event, and thanks for being part of that. It was a great show of camaraderie and having the board table there was really great. But the third annual event was held last night in Bayfront Park from 4:00 to 7:00. And we had nearly 80 partners and vendors that participated, many, many tables. Our East this year, and this was something new, our East High School Culinary Arts Program ran all the grills. They served out thousands of hamburgers and hot dogs for our community members. Everybody, everybody that was hungry was fed and there were many, many servings there. We also had thousands of students receiving backpacks and school supplies donated by Costco, Aspiras, and that's the new Sambuks, as well as neighborhood services. Those were all donated through there. We also had hundreds of students receiving free haircuts and hairstyles, and over 5,000 brand-new clothing items were donated by Maurices. There were many, many people who donated to the event, however, I mentioned just a few of the bigger donations, but there were also many people who donated behind the scenes so that it was well-supported. And as you looked across Bayfront on that warm summer night last night, it was sunny, there were hundreds and hundreds and actually even thousands of people playing, having a good time, getting information, having their needs met, and it was just a really beautiful event. And I want to say thanks in particular to a few people. This, this year, Shalana Monroe and Adele Rollins did so much to prepare for with fundraising and putting together all the communication and just the general setup. I really hats off to them. And I remember back when we were talking about our first Unity in our Community event, and that was running basically Assistant Superintendent Bonds, it was his grandchild, and he had it. And I had Patty and Patty Cat and, and, and the Bonds cracking around in U-Haul, going from store to store, making sure we had enough bonds. And we've really come a long way from, from being a couple of people doing everything to a huge community left, and just was really something to celebrate. And I just want to say thanks to the people who were there. We also had many, many people, almost everybody from our district, everybody here was volunteering in different aspects too. So from cleanup to everything else, it was a great opportunity. And so here's some pictures that we have. Well, I guess pressing the button on our microphone while asking slides, that's him. But as you see, we had a number of community performances too. We had the ballet, different music performances, we had lots and lots of people with different events. Just happened to see my stepson, who's a parent, he's there in one of the pictures. But many people there sharing, we have our variety of organizations, a lot of community partners were there with their booths, really, really good opportunity. And I see somebody throwing a ball there for the hockey, the group was doing an information piece for the hockey booster group. And we had bouncy houses and Brenda Sparks, Director Sparks had what may have been one of the more challenging supervision pieces, making sure everybody was safe in the bouncy houses, sliding in and out, having a good time, lots of fun there. And thanks as well to Adele for, Adele Rollins for taking these pictures. As you know, one of our pictures out here on the projector board, the one of the Native American dancing, that was won one of the national awards for photography. So she's, she's a really great photographer. I started some leadership updates. I shared the leadership slide deck for Duluth Leadership Team. Some people might be wondering, what are these teams that you're talking about? I'm going to go into that later in the slideshow. But we have our Duluth Leadership Team, we had an all-day work session on the 13th. We had an all-day Principal Plus work session on the 14th, as well as our secondary and elementary instructional leadership teams on the 15th. It just really felt very positive. We have everybody, we have a strong foundation, we have a strong strategic plan, and it very much feels like we're all rowing in the same direction. And I think that there's many great things in store for us this year. Some of the professional development focused on our new acronym for the year that you'll probably hear a lot more about, which is SAEL. We're going to SAEL this year, and SAEL is the four focus areas of safety, attendance, inclusion, and literacy. So thinking about the work with the REDACT, the work with improving attendance, work with implicit bias, and work with safety, those are all parts of the professional learning that we're focusing on throughout the year.
Say it again.
SAEL, safety, attendance, inclusion, or is it inclusivity? Inclusion, inclusion, and literacy. So today, in this room, we had hundreds of people. We had our certified staff and our non-certified staff for orientations, and that's part of what we're doing for our retention work, is making sure that we're doing more to support our new employees as they onboard into the work here. So we were all part of that, and tomorrow we'll be holding a training for new special education employees. And Thursday, as you all know, we'll be holding our next board work session, a professional learning opportunity. And next week, all of our staff is back as we return for professional development and make final preparations for our students and families. And just to remind you of the board, if you're interested, our Welcome Back session is at Danville High School, and it runs, the main part that you might be interested in is from 9:00 to 10:00. And if you want to be very able to come, it's nice because we have a time record, recognize our board members there. Our learning leadership teams and structures, now I'll share more about this another in greater depth in a future meeting, but I want to share just a quick overview of this. To switch tabs here. So when I was talking about the different teams, one of our board members asked, well, you're always talking about these different teams, who are they and who are they, you know, how are they represented? And so we have our Senior Leadership Team, which is basically myself, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, Executive Director Zunich, and Executive Director Severance. And we work together to basically provide a link between what happens with the board and what happens with our cabinet. And our cabinet really works to identify plans, monitor key priorities, and achieve the vision and execute our strategic direction. So that's really our main working group. And then we have our Principals Plus, which is our group of leaders from all of our districts, from all of our district schools, rather, but also the teaching and learning leadership. So as they come together around curriculum issues or around advancing equity and things like that, that's the group that works there. So it's kind of Principals Plus, those that support. Then our Duluth Leadership Team, which is the group that met last Tuesday, that is all leaders in the district, includes our operational leaders too. So Principal Plus is basically everybody related to teaching and learning, including our principals, where the Duluth Leadership Team is that group and the operational individuals like our facilities managers and our transportation manager and food service and everybody else. Then we have our elementary and secondary instructional leadership teams, which are run by Director Sparks and Director Arva, and those groups focus on some of the individual leveled needs of secondary and elementary. So the nine elementaries, for instance, get together and they work through things like focusing on the elementary schedule we're rolling out, secondary is working on their work with the new middle school model and high school schedule that's rolling out. So there's lots and lots of good things that are happening there. And then finally, there's departmental meetings as well, and teams select the various teams like the teaching and learning equity department will get together, different resources as a team, those different groups are meeting as well. But this document talks about what is the purpose of the group? And then, you know, there's a, there's a general overview of what the purpose is, but then a more detailed structure of what does that look like? And then who are the facilitators of that different, the different groups? And then what is the membership of the different groups? When are the meetings? What is it that we're monitoring? And then what are organizational tools to be used to keep ourselves on track? But I'll, I'll make sure that we have this available for additional questions, but I just wanted to have that as some background information for the group. That's a lot of information that I adjust right now, but get back to my slides.
Could I ask if other board members would find it a good, a good handout to have in your red folders as you're here at board meetings? Or do you have your own organizational method where this chart is going to be easy for you to access? Or where could we put this where it's a regular part? Could it be a part of Board Book? Just, but not within our meetings, but, you know, we have Board Book. Is there, is there a folder where board members could put things in that we reference a lot, like our three-year plan, maybe the senior leadership and its members? It would be very helpful. There's probably about 10 items that all of us could brainstorm that are key things that we're always going back into our, our notes or our files to make sure we have. But if it was somewhere where even if tonight we needed to look at that document, but we didn't bring it with us, but that's for future things, but that would be, I don't know if that would, it having this chart that you just showed us in our red folders would be easy for us to access as you always were, because you refer to these leaders all the time in your reports from that.
No, I think that's, that's a great suggestion. I know other, other board members have asked, well, maybe like a glossary of terms and acronyms.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that if we're thinking about different resources that the board would be interested in, we could maybe even put together some three reminders or something like that, so you have them available and accessible. We'd be glad to do that if it's desired. So maybe if, we could discuss that a little bit at work session or if we could feedback individually. So I'm going to go through, you're going to hear a lot more about these key action cards. We talked about the action cards that we have, which are the big rock support that we're focused on as a district. I did review them in a rather high level in June as we're going into summer, but they're fleshed out a little bit more, but this is a high-level overview that we shared in our Duluth Leadership Team, so that folks knew what it was that we're working on. But we will be going through these in much, much greater detail during any of the whole meetings. But I wanted to share that under our work in supporting every student, the academic portion, we'll be focusing on tier one, tier one instruction. So what are we doing as a core? How are we making sure our universal instruction is the best it can be? So that there's necessarily as much need for instruction in other areas and support through specialized evaluation. We want to make sure the first dose is the best dose. And then professional learning communities, which is basically how our teachers and other professionals have the time and opportunity to meet together, to work on things. That's, we've had them in place, but we have much more space for them this year because we have some district-influenced professional learning communities, so we can have them tied more specifically to the strategic plan. That was part of the contract language we worked on. Under, still, under supporting every student academic, a lot of work this year being done with the REDACT, all of our literacy efforts, with Phase One letter training, UFLI and everything related to literacy. We'll make sure reports are built into our progress monitoring, as well as the other, the other how we're doing it is through our continuous improvement teams. So basically, at each of our schools, there's a continuous improvement team that works on the, the school improvement plan for the building and really is taking the district goals and personalizing them to the schools. And they'll also have oversight of the professional learning communities as they work. We also think about, when we support every student, we don't just think about academics, we think about their social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And so this year, we're really, as we've talked about, continuing to emphasize our PBIS and multi-tier systems to support work in our schools. And you might be thinking, how come some of these things are repeated? Did you work on that last year? Yes, we did. But oftentimes, things are, will take multiple, multiple years for them to be deeply in place. It's, it's not just a flip of a light switch to move to a positive behavior system or to move to a new literacy model to do it well. We want to make sure that we're continuing and then what is taking, what's on Phase One during the first year, what's on Phase Two, and continue on there. Under supporting every student, we also think about family and community engagement. And we have a new position in family and community engagement, and we're really focusing a lot this year, when we talk about family and community engagement, what are we doing with attendance? A lot of the emails I get from different superintendent groups and leadership groups are talking about chronic absenteeism. Since we, since we went through the pandemic, there's, there's a very different attendance in many, many schools across the country, including here in Duluth. And so we want to make sure that we're partnering with our families and with the community to make sure that we're engaging students in their learning and that we're doing everything possible to get people here so that they can learn. As far as advancing equity, that's, that's the second focus area. We're going to be doing some things related to implicit bias training, and we can share more about that. There's actually a progress monitoring report that we'll have in November after the training's done, so you can learn more about that. We have under our improving systems, which is the third area, and we think about what is Director Severance and her team and others working on. It's not just human resources, but recruiting and retaining. So what is our vision for recruiting, retaining, what are some of the challenges, and how we're working on that? We also know that we're going through some budget reduction and reallocation work this year, so that's some of the big work of the finance department, is they're working on making sure that we are as clear about where we're at with our financial forecasts, as well as the work we're doing to make sure that there's a very inclusive process and a very transparent process, and making sure that we have our reductions and reallocations, that it's not done, something done behind closed doors, but something that we're giving regular updates to the board, and that we're also engaging all of our unions and other stakeholders in that process. Some improving systems related to the other areas of our operations, transportation, we have a good process network. We're putting in our new routes. If you remember, last year, we had some bumps in the roads, okay? With the transportation in the beginning of the year, as we moved to a new software system. We've done a lot of work behind the scenes with process mapping and improving structures for how we do things. For instance, we noted that previously we had some issues with our special education students not being routed into the system properly, because sometimes as we're getting new students in over the summer, when our teachers don't come back and they haven't had a chance to look at the IEP, we weren't, we weren't necessarily taking into account the transportation needs as far as who might need special transportation. And so now that is built into our process. We also have some new things going on in child nutrition, improving our check-in, check-out plans with our students and new software there. And then the S in SAEL is safety, and we are working on a roll-up of I Love You Guys, which is basically very similar to the ALICE training that we've had before. which is basically very similar to the ALICE training that we've had before. There are, the main, one of the main differences is that the terms used related to like lockdown and things like that, those are matched with police departments throughout the country use, whereas the ALICE training was not unmatched. It also takes into account, the I love you guys part takes into account other types of emergencies. ALICE is more intended towards working just on active shooter type situations where I love you guys is based more in a variety of types of things that happens. Maybe there's a railway accident and a chemical spill or something like that. We have to be prepared for all of those events. And so we're doing training there. I think it's very important that we, as we roll this up though, it's important for us to make sure that we have a lot of communication with our families. Because it's very important that our families are well-informed about these changes. And so that they, if there are any questions, that they understand how the policies are quite similar, but do have some differences and can point out those differences and also hang ourselves available for questions and answers around our families. And then really thinking about our environment. And when we say environmental protection, it's not necessarily thinking about, you know, environmental protection like the EPA. But we're thinking about how we're making sure that our school environments are as safe as possible. So I'm thinking about standard protocol with different blocking of doors, different signage, things like that. We're always reviewing and trying to fine tune. So those are some of the big rocks, so to speak, of work that we do. And when we say big rocks, some of the leadership time management talks about, put the big rocks in place in your calendar and system first. Then you can fill it in with the rest. But make sure that we're allocating our time and resource towards the things that are most important for us right now. So back to school updates.
Superintendent Magus, a question from Board Member Banks.
Yes.
So, excuse me, of the trainings that you mentioned, will any of those trainings be available to board members? Where could we?
We definitely could have trainings available. I know we're going to be putting together some virtual trainings because we have, we trained up our leadership teams and we are training the teams on, there's some large group instruction that takes place after the welcome at Danville. And then there's also additional training that happens within schools afterwards because we want to make sure it's personalized to the individual site. But we can, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, we could probably work with Lexie Maff to consider what it would look like because we have those recorded trainings, correct?
That's correct. We can, we'll work on it.
Thank you for the question.
Can I add to that? Because I know that I see that there's, is there an upcoming training for implicit bias?
In October.
Yeah, in October 14th. And that was also offered to board members previously. And so, you know, that might be something we're interested in as, if there's changes in that and that professional development opportunity. So that would be one that I think about when you talk about opening up opportunities. The other one that we should continue to talk about would be the I love you guys training. And as, I mean, as we are in this space, what does it look like for that kind of training for board meetings and for committee meetings? And for any meetings that are held here by district? I'm sure it's in that training. I love the title. I think it already makes me more calm to know that that is. And my question for that goes on over here is just, I would imagine it's a challenge to move from one safety protocol we've been doing for over 10 years into a new protocol. And, you know, I can remember a lot of, as board members, we get a lot of questions from our community on safety. We might not get a lot on other areas, but boy, when they know that there's some safety things. So anything that you gather that you could send our way in the next weeks about the transition, how you get from one system of operation to this new protocol. And maybe it's not as hard as it sounds to me because I don't know anything, but I love your asking.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. And Communications Officer Williams, and I will work to make sure that we also share information with the board as we often do before we go to families because we want to make sure that you have the information in case you're asked questions. And so that will be things that we do as well. But we do recognize that there are changes. The protocol is not that much different, but I think it's still important for us to make sure anytime there's a change in things related to safety. And I think you can cause anxiety and cause people to be concerned and want to make sure they have their questions answered. And so it improves us to make sure that we're informing people as well as possible. Speaking of training, we have our rollout of artificial intelligence. So we are going to be moving forward with adult use of Gemini, which is the Google platform for artificial intelligence. And we'll be rolling that out next week with our staff. There's a couple links there as far as the draft AI resolution that's also on Board Book. But also, we can share additional resources on Gemini. And also for staff that wants to use it, which would include school board members. We have a training module that we will share just because we want to make sure that people are using it responsibly. One of the key things, if you remember from previous conversations is, no, actually, I think this was, it's hard to remember who is in which meeting. This was as leadership training. We talked about the use of personal information within an open source language model. We have to be very careful that we're not putting in, for example, a student's IEP and saying, give me a brief summary of what this student's IEP is. Because that shares far too much information. Or putting in, you know, a friend's resume and saying, create a college letter for this. So we have to be very careful about personal information that we're putting into Gemini. So that's something that we, it's a little different than you might see externally or in corporate settings just because we have a tailored protocol with our part. Little musical here. But Gemini is very powerful. I've been using ChatGPT on the side personally. But now the leadership, the leadership team's already able to use Gemini. And we've been able to play with it. And it's really, really quite impressive what it's able to do. And transportation update. We talked a little bit about transportation previously. But we have that complete rollout with the new transportation system with line routes for maximum efficiency and also improving our communication system. And the software system is communicating with Infinite Campus so that there's a nightly import, which means the data that we have in Infinite Campus as we get through students automatically overnight gets uploaded into the transportation system. So that it's not a manual upload. That's really important to us to make sure that as new students are coming into our district, we're able to build the routes for them as quickly as possible. But that's something we wanted to let you know when we started the school year. And again, as I mentioned, there's that new point-of-sale terminals at our sites as well as the rollout of the food service and software. And again, like our transportation software engaged with Infinite Campus. So there, as I mentioned, there's a lot going on. I went through things kind of quickly, but part of it is because it's still going to be subject to all of our progress monitoring reports in our committee of all and so on. But I wanted to give you kind of a preview of where we're at for this year as well as some of the highlights of what we have moved forward. But more than anything, I think it is so exciting to have our students come back, as we discussed. And it's so exciting to have our staff coming back here. As I mentioned this morning, we had our new orientations. And just to see the positive spirit that our new employees are showing and our returning employees, it's just, it's a great time of year. I think sometimes there's a little anxiousness as people come back from the year. But people are really grounded and people are really excited to be here.
Does that complete your, any questions from board members? I know Member Lauter Kemp, your light was on at one point, I think, during the opportunities for board trainings or input.
Thank you. I think it was discussed well. I just was going to reiterate really, in the past, we've had some opportunities, particularly for the online trainings. And for those of us who work outside the home, that's really helpful. But so I was just kind of setting in what you were saying, so thank you.
And I just have a general question, probably not impossible. But is there ever an ability for a soft rollout in transportation routes? Like are, is there an opportunity before that first day to, you know, bring in bus drivers and have them, you know, do their routes and see?
Sorry, I misunderstood when you said soft rollout. I shook my head no, but I was like, I think that like, you know, partially put routes in place or something like that. We do have opportunity for our bus drivers and directors. Do you want to share?
Thank you. All of our bus routes are given to the bus drivers before the start of school. They do test runs, but yeah, they do. They do, they drive the routes and make sure they know where all the pickups are. And, you know, it's our job to make sure they feel comfortable. They have their list and they're ready to go on the first day of school. But yes, yes, is that answer to your question.
Follow-up question? That was really loud. I apologize. When they do the practice route, are they going at the same time of day?
That's a good question. I'll have to, I'll have to ask that question to make sure. You mean like if it's a route that starts at 6:52 and? I'll follow up with that. We're having a two-hour transportation meeting tomorrow and I will ask that question.
Sure.
Thank you. That's a good question. Thanks.
And then going on to then our next debate, I'm sorry, Member Eater.
I just wanted to, as a parent in the district as well, I have the bus scheduled for both my kids. It looks great. We're ready for that eight o'clock pickup, so. All right. So thank you. And I believe this year, I think it might be out earlier this year than it was last year. So that's been, kids are talking about what bus and where and what. So it's out there and I think parents are looking at it, so great.
Thank you.
Thank you. With everything that you see, of course, I want to, I have to recognize all of the teams that are working into it. This is, it's an amazing effort to get the school year off the ground. And sometimes it feels like we're flapping and flapping to try and fly. And it's really amazing the amount of work that goes in this time of year. There's a lot of long nights and a lot of long days for our teams. And I'm very, very appreciative of all the work that's happening.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your appreciation because there's a lot. I think all of us have probably either had the first days or have gone into the school early to see things. And there's all piles in corners all over the school office and things that are happening. So thinking about, you know, events and meetings and schedules, Member Lauter Kemp.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to respond to one other thing. Superintendent Magus, I know you talked about this earlier in your report about the unity, the community event and thanking assistants superintendent. But one of the things that I was also struck by last night when I was wandering around at the event was just all of the different staff, in particular, our principal leadership, who were grilling hamburgers and serving hot dogs and just being out there as well, doing many things for the event. And I know in the next few days, you're going to be meeting with different staff. And so just from the board, I don't speak on behalf of the board, but at least from me, you know, please express the thank you for the many staff that were all about, out and about and really visiting with families and that. And we were able to point to staff and introduce staff to people in the community as well. And so I just really noted that, that so many staff were out there. And so I just really want that acknowledged if you can in the next few days during the course.
I definitely will. And really, when I think about the work last night, there were certainly people from our leadership team that did a lot of coordination. But there were principals out there that were doing so much. And also a lot of staff members. We put out an email to the entire staff saying, if you want to volunteer and help out with anything, please do so. And we had, it takes a community lift. And that's exactly what happened last night. It was one of the highlights of our time together here in Duluth. I love it.
Thank you. And we're now going on to just the last part of number seven out of number six. See, and that's the schedule of meetings that Patty puts out every Friday for us. And this week, we have an opportunity for the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee or the Johnson and O'Malley meeting. Both are at Denville, one's at five, one's at seven. Both revolve around our parent advisory committee and other opportunities for our American Indian parents. And they have the booth next to us at the Unity for the Community. And so it's really nice to meet them. And, you know, I certainly had some questions, as some of you did too, and asked me about like, what is the Johnson O'Malley meeting? Because that's something that showed up relatively new to us in the last couple months. And they just, they encourage, like we can, it's an open meeting, and they encourage us to come and find out a little bit more. And I'm going to try to recap what they shared about the specific Johnson O'Malley meeting. But certainly, it's tomorrow at Denville. You see that. And then we have a workshop on Thursday from four o'clock to seven o'clock. And that's next week. So this, finishing of this weekend, and there's nothing on our schedule. Our is kind of six through the thirtieth. Any questions about the meetings? Then going on, then going on to the reports with the standing committee. First report is from the committee of the whole and I'll ask assistant superintendent questions.
Thank you.
Sounds like a local hearing, mate.
We were still here on the Cal meeting on the 15th. And it was again a full agenda. It started off under improving systems with a report from Lexie Maff, our health and safety coordinator, related to our RNDI testing results. Another presentation was given under our community, our community education department, Danielle Sundin. She's here with us. If there are any questions. It was related to the soy juice waiver and fees. Presentation was provided by Brian Brown, our facilities manager. And it was related to the projects that are underway this summer. And he provided a lot of pictures from the before and after. And then what these are in process right now. I provided an update related to our school resource officer results, program results from our survey and policy and other work related to our school resource officer program. Superintendent Magus provided information related to the progress monitoring calendar, which you mentioned today. And more information will come related to the progress monitoring calendar. Other supporting every student, senior leaders providing information related to all the planning that is underway. And Superintendent Magus also shared information related to the planning that has occurred over the summer from the various departments. And I appreciate that Senior Leaders were sharing information. But we also provide that information at the Cal meeting as well. There was also a presentation from the board related to.
There was a presentation, the last item on our was, was we together celebrated and shared the superintendent evaluation and summary of that.
And that will be called, you did.
Any questions? Seeing none, we will go on to the Human Resource Business Service Committee meeting. The matter eater, chair eater.
Great. All right, here we go. I'll come again and just in here. So we started at 4:37 on Monday, August 12th. We moved that meeting to Monday because Tuesday was our.
Election.
Right, Mary. Yeah, it was the election, wasn't it? I couldn't remember that or national, no. Okay, it was the election, so we had our meeting on Monday. So we started out with our HR monthly departmental report. And continuing the streak, we do see more hires and we do resignations and retirements. So we're very glad about that. We did see, as Superintendent Magus talked about, we had our new hire orientation and had someone between 85 to 95 new hires, so that's great. We also had our HR leadership team provided a three-hour training to the Duluth leadership team. The afternoon of the 13th, we had topics like employee coaching, performance management, onboarding, educating about the Family Medical Leave Act. And then the HR team will be provided, also provided a reasonable suspicion training to the same group later that year. Or I guess you didn't, you will, sorry. On August 7th, the HR team participated in a job there at the Duluth Career Force. Um, on August seventh, the HR team participated in a job there at the Duluth Career Force Center and was also the business of the day on August twelfth. So that meant staff from the HR as well as leadership from both transportation and maintenance, as those are departments here um, at the district that are, that we really need to beef up the hiring. Um, they were onsite at the Duluth Career Force, so they could provide immediate application and interviews for positions. And teachers on call was also there to promote substitute care professional hiring. Our HR manager, Charlie Cook, attended that Minnesota Public Employer Labor Relations Association Summer Conference. And he learned about things like leveraging artificial intelligence to enhance HR and labor relations practices, state family medical leave program, that's a big one. Negotiations and labor and employment legislative updates. Um, executive director Severance, um, attended the legal update for school administration, for school administrators on the eighth, where they learned about new legislative laws and case law updates affecting school and education, due process and employee investigations and issues created by, I don't know where that's worded, issues created by twenty twenty-three legislative changes. With the framing of that. Anyway, um, the benefits department is preparing for the new school year by planning on um, ways to get benefit information to our employees. That includes new ways for people to enroll in their benefits, additional education materials, bringing in more experts from our benefits partners to help inform our new and, and existing employees. And the benefits department also participated in the new hiring orientation, so they could provide that benefit information to our employees and answer all those important questions. So as of Monday, they have, um, for our certified unit, we had, today we have filled a hundred ninety-four positions with seventy-three external hires. I'm sure that's changed since that date. For non-certified, we have seventy-seven positions filled with twenty-five external hires. And this evening we will be um, holding on the clerical unit and on, let me just look. We have a couple contracts that will be approved in this evening. And that's some of our HR monthly departmental summary.
Can I just ask a clarification, just maybe more for our community, but, but actually for me as a board member? When, when your reports say seventy-seven positions filled, twenty-five external, can you share what that means? Seventy-five positions, twenty-five external. What does twenty-five external mean?
It means, means that um, twenty-five that aren't current staff are sort of new staff coming into the district.
So the seventy-seven positions filled, um, I can't do the math that quickly, but like fifty of them were internal. They were at some other site and went to a new position.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, moving on to business services, we will resume our enrollment reports in October, once we've had a full month of our students in school, um, for our child. So we'll have that resumed in October. Moving on to our child nutrition departmental report. Um, we have finalized contract with Harbor City International to provide them with meals for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. This is pretty standard every year if I'm remembering correctly. Um, these meals follow the National School Lunch rules and regulations and the partnership started in twenty eleven. There it is, Kelly. Um, these meals are prepared and shipped daily out from Denville. Um, as Superintendent Magus spoke about earlier, we have a new infant, infant campus for food service program. So it's good to see that we're implementing all of these new soft core systems. Um, new employees, so we have some new employees um, in our child nutrition department. That's great. We have, they've been busy hiring six new employees for our cafeterias, which is great because we've been operating um, with low staff numbers there. And currently we have about four positions left to fill. And this is um, something I really want to highlight for our community and our board, that our outstanding lunch debt this year is around nine thousand dollars, nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, which is down um, an incredible amount from previous years. And that has to do with having free universal meals for breakfast and lunch. I know that Minnesota's been getting a lot of great positive attention for that nationwide, so I just want to lift up um, how that really impacts our district and our families. We have at times been holding about a hundred and twenty thousand on our books of outstanding lunch debt. That debt has come down quite a bit and we are able to feed our students both breakfast and lunch. And just to refer it to our community, um, our students can go ahead and get their lunch and then also go back for as much of vegetables and fruit as they need and then also milk. I'm assuming that next month we'll have the final numbers for how many students that we fed um, this summer for our free um, breakfast and lunch. So I look forward to seeing that information coming next month. And just a family walking from Piedmont today, they were running around, holding their bag, they were coming out from free lunch to breakfast, so it was great to see that. Moving on to our facilities departmental report, it sounds like at the Canadian, the whole um, Mr. Brown went and went through a lot of information that has to do with what's going on with our um, long-term facilities maintenance. So there's no need to go over that. I'm excited to see that the pool at Lincoln Park is ready for the sixth and seventh graders that use it this year. Um, buildings at this point, I know Kezon must be closing down here pretty soon, so our building maintenance staff are gonna be spending a lot of time cleaning up our buildings so that they're fresh and ready for our students to start school um, come September third, something like that. And that's everything from there. Moving on to the presentation on the radon test results, those on the committee of the whole, so now let's go ahead and move on and talk about what was going on in our technology. So our technology department is gearing up for the years. Our students come back in the building and it sounds like some great stuff going on with artificial intelligence for our um, employees here at the district. Of note for our technology department, we had an e-rated RFP bid. Um, you will see the results of a bid to provide network connectivity for all of our locations that are in our data centers as well as all of our internet service for the district. This bid will request a one-year-only contract from July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-six, because we're gonna be having some school and location changes as we um, pull back from some of the leases we have out in the community and consolidate those. Um, consolidate that at soon to be renamed the DNT building. Uh, let's see, we are still working to make sure that the CDW um, comes onsite and gets our boardroom system up and working so that our community has access to our meetings. And as usual, this summer, um, the technology department has been working hard. They're replacing or upgrading two hundred and sixty-four network switches and this bid was about one point four million dollars. As we move into the fall um, and winter projects, I don't see much there. And then that is our technology report for the month. As we move on to our transportation, we have Superintendent Magus talk about what's going on in our transportation department in terms of getting our routing, our school bus routing up and um, ready for the school year. As I mentioned earlier, we already have set out those bus routes and keeping heater is looking forward to his eight oh seven pickup time. And that is our transportation report. We have a recommended resolution, which will be our acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. On our consent agenda, we have our HR staffing report and we have three job descriptions. Um, engineer two, second shift engineer one, inspectorship engineer two. And can I bother you, Detective Director Severance, to just talk quickly about those three job descriptions? I know one of them, we changed some of the qualifications.
Yeah, actually, all three of them, we worked through negotiations with our maintenance union and reduced our minimum qualifications to be the lesser licensure, which matches what the state requires for the boiler's license. Our job descriptions had one step higher than the state required, which made it difficult for us to fill the positions. So we agreed that we would reduce those three jobs by one level and match with the state requirement.
And this was done in hopes of improving and um, attracting employees to those positions. Yeah, great. That's just part of our strategic plan as we work to make sure our processes are continually improving. For our finances, we have a financial report. This month we had no bids or fewer quotes and we had some contracts, change orders and leases. We had a contract for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven with our Duluth Community School Collaborative. That's one of, a very important um, relationship between the Duluth Public Schools and the Duluth Community School Collaborative. They were at Unity and the Community uh, yesterday. It's great to see them. We have a contract with um, Cutter with College and Career Readiness. And then we also have a lease for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five for the Tech Village. Um, uh, the last thing we have was some miscellaneous informational items, you have some expenditure contracts, no con, no cost contracts and some revenue contracts as well. If you have any questions about those, please feel free to refer to um, the agenda from our HR Business Services meeting. And that was our meeting um, for this month. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Yes, can you explain with um, free breakfast and lunch, how were there outstanding balance?
That's a great question. We talked about that. Um, so there must have been, we, I believe now have a policy that unless there is, a student has money on their account, then they can go back and get that second à la carte item or, or something like that. So this must have been times to get back for some of those à la carte items and must may not have had money on their account. Is that correct?
Yes, and in addition, um, all outstanding debt, it's our policy gets sent to collections, so they were been able to recoup some funds as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So students um, now even with free breakfast and lunch, they do still pay for additional à la carte or is? Yes, they will, yes, they will in the fall, yes.
Thank you.
So could you clarify too, what, you know, just for anybody else, I mean, I, I think I know, I've been in lunch a lot, but the à la carte are things like they go back for, you know, what, what's on the à la carte, french fries or another option? They have, they have a sandwich or hamburger, they go back for another, you know, one of those, those would be considered à la carte?
Yes, that's correct. But from what I understand, fruits and vegetables are exempt. And that moving forward here, except do they want to ask as many times as they want, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so our final report is our policy committee report by Chair of that committee, Laffigan.
Thank, thank you. So uh, we met on Thursday, August fifteenth, just last week, feels like yesterday. Uh, and we had a number of items, gonna go through them. All of the items are on, on our consent agenda, except for the last one, regulations, which is informational. Uh, and I'm gonna start with uh, uh, policies for first reading, policy four twenty, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections and diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. And uh, this is to replace forty fifty-five, forty sixty-five and fifty-one thirty. And um, the purpose again of this policy uh, is public concern that students and staff of the school district be able to attend the schools of the district without becoming infected with serious communicable or infectious diseases, including but not limited to uh, HIV, uh, uh, human immunodeficiency virus, acquired immune deficiency syndrome, AIDS, hepatitis B, enter, chival, help me out here. Thank you. Uh, minors on staff here are required that the school board adopt measures effectively responding to health concerns while respecting the rights of all students, employees and contractors, including those who are so affected, uh, infected. The purpose of this policy is to adopt such, such measures. And really appreciate Crystal and other staff who worked on this policy. It covers a lot of Minnesota and federal statutes as well. And um, one of the questions that did come out of this is if we could shorten or change the title. And thank you um, for, for sharing that we can. And so um, well, this is the first reading. It seems like it would be great if staff such as Crystal and Jason who worked on this could come back with a proposed new title. Would be my suggestion. Uh, but this is the first reading uh, of that. And again, it's replacing um, policy forty fifty-five, forty sixty-five and fifty-one thirty. Uh, the next policy um, that we reviewed for first reading.
Member Laffigan.
Yes.
On that particular policy, if, if uh, any of the committee members or the board members said it, but um, I mean, change would be over to that as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the next policy is policy four oh three, uh, which is discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees. And uh, this is a new policy. The purpose of this policy is to achieve effective operation of the school district's programs through the cooperation of all employees under a system of policies and roles applied fairly and uniformly. And um, this policy is also referred to in the student handbook. And thank you for that background information, Superintendent. Uh, and again, this is a first reading of this policy. Um, the next policy for second reading is five oh seven point five, school resource officers. Uh, and this is to delete, would also delete eleven fifty-five police department relationship and twenty thirty-five police school liaison officers. And the purpose of this policy is to establish the contractual duties and training requirements of a school resource officer. And um, uh, we did have a lot of uh, conversation around this also in June on related that this policy really uh, types in with the Minnesota, the new Minnesota state statutes as well. So that is policy uh, five oh seven point five for second reading. And then we had a number of policies for review. And just a reminder that they're for review often because of minor changes, uh, maybe there's specific needs um, or often because of state statute changes um, that needed to change. So uh, policies for review, we have a number of them. The first one being policy four oh one, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. The purpose of this policy is to provide equal employment opportunity for all applicants for school district employment and school district employees. And again, in red is, is the changes, um, blue there are uh, uh, also changes related to statutes. Uh, so that is policy four oh one. Um, the next one is um, policy, oh, I just, okay, eight oh two. Um, uh, disposition of absolute leap of equipment and material. And the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for the superintendent to assist in timing disposition of absolute equipment and material. And there were some legislative changes with this specific policy, uh, which again, you can see the statute and the changes at the end. The next policy is seven oh eight, transportation of non-public school students. The purpose of this policy is to address transportation rights of non-public school students and to provide equality of treatment in transporting such students pursuant to law. And we, we actually reviewed this policy uh, in eleven twenty-three. Uh, but again, there were some legislative changes on this. Uh, and it was changing um, wordage from shell to must. So as you look through that, that's kind of the key change there uh, in three places. The next policy is policy six one five. And uh, this is testing accommodations, modifications and exemptions for IEPs, uh, section five oh four plans and LEP students. And the purpose of this, the policy is to provide adequate opportunity for students identified as having individual education program, IEP, Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, five oh four combination plan, five oh four plan for English learner EL needs to participate in statewide assessment systems designed to hold schools accountable for the academic performance of all students. And it was really a, just a simple change uh, in this one. Uh, and um, at the end, uh, there was a, a change made in uh, section four. Um, just clarifying the right chapter and thank you for making those changes, Patty, and again, some legal references. Uh, and then the next one is policy six oh four, instructional curriculum. The purpose of this policy is to provide for the development of course offerings for students. And um, we act, uh, the, the. And we actu- the main changes here had to do with changing capitals to lowercase. And there was a section related to health standards, and then again, some state statute changes. And we actually had a first and second reading on this just in February, March of this year, but changes came from state statute. The next for review is policy five two one, student discipline and disability non-discrimination. And the purpose of this policy is to protect students with disabilities from discrimination on the basis of disability and to identify and evaluate learners who, within the intent of section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, need services, accommodations, or programs in order that such learners may receive a free, appropriate public education. And again, this one was a new address change. We just need to change that. And then tucking back under the general statement of policy, there was some additional areas of who is protected. And we did review and adopt this one back in February and March of this year, or March of, February and March of twenty twenty-three. And then the last item was again, under regulations, and regulations are informational. We did have a presentation by Bart Smith and Peter Graves on five two four point one R, artificial intelligence tools for staff. And again, that introduction about this is that artificial intelligence presents significant opportunities to enhance in the quality of education by providing innovative tools for educators to ensure the ethical, secure, and effective use of AI within the public schools. This regulation outlines guidance for district staff. So those are all of the readings, first and second, and areas for review. We also provided you all with a list of the forty-five different policies we worked on this year. And as we're starting kind of our next season of policies under the new year. So that, those policies were from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I just want to really express a huge thank you to Patty LaCatt, in particular, who is the one who takes all of our conversations and discussions and input and helps clarify questions and get answers and puts them in the forms that we need them in. And she does a tremendous amount of work, and particularly this month, making sure we were reviewing a number of policies that had mainly legislative changes from the end of May. So really huge thank you. And as I shared at the policy meeting, also, those forty-five policies from this year really represent many, many hours that our staff worked in committees or worked with different groupings to revise these policies as well. So really a great appreciation there. Again, all of this will be in the consent agenda. Thank you.
And I just want to thank the Policy Committee, really. This is a big part of the responsibility of the school board. And the way we have tried to be efficient and be keeping on track is to appoint a committee, three members of our school board that will sit on that policy committee. And Rosie has been leading, Member Lafford Kim has been leading our policy committee since its inception four years ago, as far as a committee. You know, many school boards don't have a specific policy committee. Maybe they all do it, or I don't know how other boards do it. But I'm really thankful for the policy committee's work to get all of these forty-five through and discussed. You know, policies are important. And again, I just want to thank you too, Member Lafford Kim. It's sometimes hard to listen to a policy committee right now. It's a challenge because of our technology obstacles here. Last month's policy committee was really choppy. Everybody's voice dropped off. So you've got bits and pieces, and it's really hard, and I can only, so I just really appreciate that you actually do such a good job of giving the purpose and talking about the background and pointing out statutes that are already in place for verification that this is legal and all of the work that you do and all the knowledge. So thanks for your leadership there too, and making it comfortable for us to still ask questions if we need to ask questions, but pass the policies in our consent agenda because we know that they've been that entire count of the school board members.
Thank you. And it is really important that Sarah and Stephanie, they all, all of us put our eyes on these policies as we get them presented from Patty and the staff. And, you know, we all find different things that we might have questions on or that we might want to tweak. And so we do put a lot of time into reading ahead of time and following up before our policy needs. So thank you for that.
And catching those addresses that might be drawn in the bottom.
Yes.
One of the things too, Sarah, remember by example, is that you wondered why shell needed to be changed to must. And as I was listening, I thought, well, I'm going to Google that. I don't know. And it said in Google that shell is ambiguous, and the legal community is moving to using the word must. I'm sure you looked at it too. So I was like, oh, okay, just a simple tweak. But, you know, we all kind of come with really great questions and ability to kind of get it worked. Thank you. And that brings us to, oh, yes, oh, Member Banks.
So I have questions regarding SRO policy stuff, several questions. I didn't see anything in the policy that addressed who determines what force is. So I'd like some clarification on that. Some may look at force one way, and some may look at force another way, negatively or positively, when they're trying to figure out things. So if there's some clarification on that, I know there's some references down below, but it's not necessarily in the policy, so I'd like to see it in there. Because we do have rogue officers, and I don't want any of those rogue officers to ever be in the district. And so I want to see clarification for that. And over the course of the next several months, I don't know, we know when we're going to be looking at the new police contract with the district. Is there a month that has been specified in for that so that we can decide if we're going to add that contract or what that contract's going to look like? I'd like to get that information ahead of time. And then here in the document, under training, I have a question. Why is a substitute officer not held to the same standards as other officers with regard to training?
Not the policy?
Yes, under training, that's here.
Section five.
Section five. So if I can get clarification on that, I would appreciate that.
So I think Assistant Superintendent Bonds has some answers to some of the questions. But related to the use of force question, I did just send on the Blue Police Department definition of force. It's their policy three hundred, and it breaks down their definition of force in significant detail. But it really, in general, when something is a school, when something is a school situation, and once the school administration turns something over to a police officer, it then relies on the police officer's training and their policies when force is used. And so referring to the police department use of force, it does talk a lot about the governance of the use of force and making sure that use of force is very, very seriously restrained, that it is a matter of critical concern and when it's used. And particularly, the force is only used in situations of maintaining safety and also if there's significant threat of bodily harm or of potential death. Those are tactics when force is used. And also the policy, we don't use the policy to enforce school policies, just as an example. We've seen sometimes when things have gone awry in other committees, maybe a school administrator is asking a police officer to take away a cell phone from a student and use of force in that regard. That is something that is very much against our policies. So we have that, that policy that I shared on with you. So Assistant Superintendent Bonds will comment there. But just in general, there were a number of questions that came to us from board members during the meeting. And so what I did is I also compiled, we got to work with Patty. The I compiled is more like Patty compiled than I sent down in my voice, answers to many, many questions that we had related to some of the policies. Because we're really trying to make sure that as we review our policies and questions arise or any other decisions may be with the board has, that we'll be a lot more diligent about documenting the question, documenting the answer, and sharing it out for decision-making. But related to our SRO work, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, do you want to comment more because you are closer to that work?
Thank you. And I would seek a point of clarification from Member Banks or offer also a suggestion. In the policy, there is a section for definitions. That could be a place where see a summarized definition of force could be added there. But as you know, the definition is really extensive, long, round, that superintendent records, it's pretty little bit. And so I can't imagine having an entire definition there, or maybe just a sure, a summarized short version as a definition of force could be added there. That's what is sought. As a, something that you wanted to see in the policy. I'd like to offer that as a suggestion.
Personally, I would be amenable to that, if it's possible.
Another further comment, oh, another further comment, is that some of the language in the new policy was, as we know, there was a lot of back and forth between the police associations and the legislature. The legislature put in some new definitions last year related to use of force. And they caused some problems because there was ambiguity in certain areas, or there was a perception of ambiguity. And so there was, one of them, actually, I think it was the first act that the legislature put in this year was to clarify some of that language. And so that's where, part of the policy comes from. And I think the intent of the current legislation is to make sure that use of force is significantly limited, especially when we consider things like chrome restraint. Those are things that are very concerning to all of us. And we want to make sure that that doesn't happen from school staff or police officers or any other entity. But because of the definitions that were put in by the state, much of the model policy was put together around that. So part of it is that we're taking the new law and working to put it in place.
And I have one final question. Section four, yeah, rowing from four B. Would the school district ever hire security guards as opposed to police officers? For extra events, for example? Or is that something that the school district would not engage in?
I would say that we are currently in a contract with a security firm for our ALCAO programming at the Tech Village. So we are in a contract with a provider there, but that's not a school resource officer. It is a security firm.
So does that, that means with this particular item here, does that fall under that?
I'm sure I'm only clear.
The, yes, made contract with the school resource officer. But it doesn't say you can also contract with security.
Correct. This does not, this policy does not refer to the security firms.
Okay.
I was just clarifying that we do, the question was, do we contract with a, another entity for services that we do, but that's with our ALCAO programming. There's not a school resource officer there. This is not referring to school resource services.
Exploring.
Member Lafford, do you have a question or are you being certain?
Yeah, no, we're just, a clarification, I guess, as the chair of this committee on policies, I just, if we are going to make any changes to this particular policy, I would want to make sure we run it by our label staff because of the Minnesota state statute changes. And I want to make sure we're in compliance with state statute. And so even small changes on this, just because of being the chair of this committee for many years now, I know small changes can make a difference. So I'm not in disagreement, Member Banks. I just want to make sure we're following good practice on that. And then just again, for the public, this is our policy. We have a separate contract, which we did review quite a bit at our committee of the whole meeting, just to clarify the difference between the contract and the policy. So, and that was a part of our committee of the whole meeting last month. So I guess I bring that up because we are to vote on this for a second reading tonight. And if we're not going to vote on it and make changes, then, or go with these suggestions, and we would need to hold up on voting on it. So I want to clarify what we're going to do.
And then I saw first member's, first mine, and then Member Zabelski's, and then Member Dieter's. So I just want to kind of share observations just from my work in schools as a teacher with the use of maybe a, not a SRO during events. Like they're typically hired for supervision at football games and at dances held in the bin districts. They sometimes will, you know, supervise other activities that are going on. And I would think that the relationship that an SRO has with that district or with that building is so invaluable to the work being done to supervise, that to go to an outside agency. And I think maybe, you know, as a board member, I would be asking, are we doing it because of cost savings? Or are we doing it to, why would we go outside the use of an SRO as a, what did you call it? I can't remember, as a security guard?
Yeah.
So, and I would imagine, you know, security guards are not even easy to access. They're, they're, they have jobs, and I don't know how much they can do these kind of one-off jobs that come up. But I would think the bigger reason why a school district would continue to use their SRO in those kinds of events is because of the relationships they already have, the knowledge they already have with the students that are going into that. And they, the students, that's another, that's one of their contract items, is that they will build relationship with students, that they will, you know, provide outside opportunities to, you know, build those kinds of things. So I would just say that would be, you know, something to consider when we think about why, why they use SROs. Member Zabelski.
I just had a thought, if as a board, we decide to add something to the definitions in looking at the policy that Superintendent Megas shared from the police department, just the fact that we could maybe reference that in the definitions, since that's their policy on it. And you know, instead of making it two more pages long, the definition, we could say, you know, definition of force, see this policy from the school or from the police department, just a thought, if we decide to go that way.
Never did.
No, had to.
Never.
Go on, something different.
We do have some further definition of force under the policy five oh seven corporal punishment from restraint. It does talk about when that would occur or not.
That's right.
So that's, that's.
What is that number again?
Five oh seven.
Five oh seven corporal punishment from restraint, basically.
That's right. Yeah.
That was the policy that came out, I'm trying to look at the date, might be adopted, and I don't see the date on that, sorry.
We don't, we're fine.
Yep. Adopted December nineteen twenty-three, so just last December.
Twenty twenty-three with me.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. That wasn't even four.
Nineteen, oh, yeah, December nineteenth twenty-three. Thanks.
Back to you.
Member Lafford, can we go back into?
Number Lawth, can we go back and just quickly talk about policies for first reading, four twenty, super boys with STIs and diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions? I one hundred percent support somehow renaming that. And I would also say that maybe, and I'd be happy to help. I'm not just trying to throw something off, like you do it. But I feel like the purpose is a little bit archaic and a little bit othering when it talks about public concern that students and staff of school districts be able to attend schools of the district without becoming infected with a serious communicable or infectious disease, including they're not limited to, and then they specify HIV, AIDS. That sort of, I feel like, language that is probably twenty years old. And so if there's a way that maybe we can just talk about communicable diseases and maybe pull the STI piece out of it, so we can just think globally about communicable diseases because that does cover STIs and things like tuberculosis and hepatitis. And maybe it's a little less jarring for families to read. The other question I had, and this just popped in my head as we connected this four twenty policy and then also thinking about the equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. And then the other one, I think, was students disability nondiscrimination. If we have a student that does have a communicable disease, let's just use HIV or AIDS as an example, and they feel like there's been a discrimination or they're being treated differently in the district, whether that's student or employee, what does that fall under? Does that fall under disability? I was just curious. I guess I never thought about that piece. I'm just connecting those pieces together. So that's something for us to think about. But I really would appreciate if there's a way that we could rename that policy and then maybe rework what the purpose of the statement is. Sorry, I appreciate your work. And if there's anything I can do to help and support, unless you got, I just don't want to shove the work on the wall. But that was just one of my thoughts.
Thank you, and both of those are first readings. And I know we have Jason Crane here, but Crystal also was involved with it. And we we.
Disability discrimination, Anthony. Is what they call it.
With the answer?
Yeah.
Should that be repeated into the microphone?
Did, and Mr. Crane, you said it would go under disability, correct?
Disability discrimination.
Disability discrimination, correct. Thank you for that.
I feel like we have not, that we have, have we resolved Member Banks's questions? And, you know, is there, do we think that policy five oh seven is sufficient to help with Member Banks asking for a definition of, definition of force? Do we think five oh seven does that? Do we want to? It seems like we have a couple of things here we can, we as a board can say, we we think that that this policy is good and that five oh seven sufficiently answers it. We we could suggest that we make a five oh seven point five R and just include a reference to the to the definitions within the the Duluth Public, Duluth Police Association definitions? Or not? I don't know if that's an option. You're the expert in policy.
I I'm not clear on that, especially with this policy. I just want to make sure we're following everything legally that we can, so.
And before the, you know, somebody, you know, so somebody could make a motion to pull this off for the second reading, and then we would vote on whether we want to do that. Because there there are certainly, I think we've had eyes on this for a long time. We have worked within the SRO language and contract and all of that for the last four years. So what's the will of the board? I'll wait for a motion to directly vote. If I don't hear one, we will simply remain on consent agenda. Member, I see Member Lawth, can I, Member Max?
Chair local, I am in support of the policy as it stands right now. Reason being, I feel that definition of force is not necessarily something that we, as a school board, in this policy need to define. It's that of our law enforcement partners, the Post Board and the Minnesota Legislature, and they've done that in various ways. The language that we have in this policy is lifted directly from state statute, which is, we're obligated to follow. And so in doing it that way, I'm comfortable with how this is. I'm also comfortable with the fact that we are looking at our SRO program on an annual basis, that we are always seeking to improve and making sure that this program is living up to its expectations, living up to its social contract when it's not addressing that where necessary. So therefore, I'm in support of having this pass on the consent agenda today. Member Banks?
So it was my understanding that the Minnesota Legislature gave the charge to the Minnesota Post Board to come back with a policy that the Minnesota Legislature would then approve. I'm not sure if that has been done yet. So could someone clarify that? And so I'm a little uncomfortable with that not being resolved yet in my mind.
Chair local, Member Banks, I hear what you're saying. There is something you get it for that category.
And beauty about the conversations that are happening at higher levels on this issue. I would say that as a school board, we're obligated to follow what is current statute when those changes are made. If they are made in the future, that will come down to our level and then we'll redress as necessary as a policy for our district. And so therefore, waiting for something that may change doesn't necessarily fulfill our obligation when we know it is current statute that we need to follow. So that's why I'm comfortable with this today.
And then what else?
I would just kind of second what you were just saying, Member Max. Just, and just sharing from a couple of years on the Policy Committee, seeing oftentimes we've had to review policies a couple of times a year based on what happens at the state level. And I really appreciate, again, Patty being on top of that and kind of bringing it forth right away through the Policy Committee pretty swiftly. So I'm I'm pretty confident that when there is a change that's needed, it will come, it will come here right away, and then we will address that.
This is a great opportunity to have discussion, and I thank board members for bringing, you know, their voice to this issue and continuing our journey on our SROs. The other thing, too, is I think that with it defined in the Duluth Police Department's jurisdiction and just the the emphasis we had last fall, there was a lot of conversation about the use of force. And between our district administration, our policy committee last fall, all worked to understand, you know, what, there was a, there was a a higher level kind of temperature around school districts around our state, which were really, you know, pressuring and questioning and pushing. And our district administration and our policy committee and our SRO leadership worked together to understand what the use of force meant in the Duluth Public Schools. And I know that's, that's, I know that it takes trust and it takes years of, you know, working together and listening to each other. But I think right now, you know, like other board members have said, the policy can stand, but will continue to always have, you know, our our ears to the legislature and to our community and working with, building relationships with our Duluth Police Department and more specifically, our SROs. Member Lawth, can?
I also appreciated at our Policy Committee meeting, again, for board members who weren't there, please go to it because we also had the Chief of Police and the officer that kind of leads SRO program available for us as well.
They were at the.
Right, the Committee of the Whole, you're right. I'm sorry, I was thinking, yeah. That meeting we had last week, so some of you had the opportunity to, I hear them as well that day.
Member Banks?
Yep, and so I don't want to belabor this, but I was at that meeting as well. For folks that look like me, it is a trust issue. And I can just about guarantee that everybody that has been at those meetings in the past didn't look like me. Maybe one or two, right? And so it's a trust issue in the community as a whole, the African heritage and Native heritage community because of how we have been treated in this community by law enforcement personnel. And so mine is all about trust. And if I don't see something in writing, I'm going to question why it's not there. And so this is not about being anti-police or broke police because I'm neutral in all those regards. So it's not about being anti-police because I am not. But I just want to make sure that when I talk to people in the community, that I can tell them, well, this is a really definitive and excellent policy because our kids are affected too. So, thank you.
That brings us to our next, our next item on our agenda, which is just any general board committee updates, any committees that we sit on within our outside community and within the school district. And I see Member Megas has his item, is it on this topic?
It's actually on the Policy Committee work, not the SRO piece. The policy on communicable diseases. I think some of the recommendations the board related to taking a look at this should maybe go beyond just the school district. I think that we suggest MSBA to really take a look at their model policy because I do see some some othering of individuals with, you know, it seems like, as I mentioned previously, it seems like kind of a vestige of some of the nineteen eighties, you know, HIV scare type of policy. And I'm sure that we're thoughtful as, not just as school board, but believe and give guidance to MSBA to consider reforming that policy.
I would agree because HIV is not just a sexually transmitted disease. Think about hemophilia, hemophilia, acne, AIDS, and then also children born to people who have HIV. So I think, just to clarify, and I'm happy to help with any of that. So just letting you know.
So we're moving on to number eight, General Board Committee Updates. Any input, any reflections, updates? Seeing none, that moves us to number nine on our consent agenda. And so I'm looking for a motion to accept our consent agenda. So, and a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Our consent agenda is approval of minutes, approval of action items that fell under human resource and finance, approval of policy readings, approval of our call committee, and that's on our consent agenda. All those in favor, we have a motion, we have a motion? And a second? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No, thank you.
The motion carries six one. Next, number ten, we have resolutions from committee reports. Now I'll turn to Member Eater to do the first resolution, ten A.
Thank you, I move definition E dash eight dash twenty-four dash forty fifty-two, acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five point zero requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore view resolve that Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from set organizations in accordance with the set order herein. Be it for the result that Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to those various organizations and individuals. All of our donations this month have to do with unity in our community. So we'd like to thank the support of Day, Minnesota State Fair, Park State Bank, Stephanie Johnson, Jason, James Myers, Maddie Christie, Alexa Salo, and Lindsay Manning for your support of the wonderful event put on by our district which is unity in our community. And resolution B dash eight dash twenty-four forty fifty-two forward.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Eater makes motion, Member Zabowski seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution B dash eight dash twenty-four dash forty fifty-two? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to number eleven, special resolutions and action items. Under eleven A, it is a resolution from HR and Member Lawth.
Thank you. I move resolution HR eight two four forty fifty-three, Education Minnesota Clerical Local six nine two A, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District seven oh nine and the Education Minnesota Clerical Local six nine two A, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period July first twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth twenty twenty-five inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute this agreement on behalf of the school district. I move this, and I also thank the negotiating team from our district as well as from the clericals for all the work on this. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Member Eater seconds it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, accepting resolution HR dash eight dash twenty-four dash forty fifty-three. It is the Education Minnesota Clerical Local six nine two dash eight's contract for the twenty, the twenty-three through twenty-five?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Our next resolution is eleven B, and Member Zabowski?
I move resolution HR dash eight dash two four dash four zero five four, the Education Minnesota Clerical Local six ninety-two A, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District seven oh nine and the Education Minnesota Clerical Local six ninety-two dash eight, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period July one two thousand twenty-five to June thirtieth two thousand twenty-seven inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the board, the school board, be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district.
Second.
So.
Sorry, sorry.
Member Lawth, can, no, I was going to second it, but it's okay. They had to jump the guns, someone usually asks for the second, but that's okay. Motion by Member Zabowski, seconded by Member Lawth. All those in favor of the resolution for the Education Minnesota Clerical Local six nine two A for the years of twenty-five through twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So that moves us to number twelve. It is, yeah, questions are other, anything for the good of the board, the good of the district, the, or anything? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Member Eater makes the motion to adjourn, is there a second? Member William seconds, speaking again. So all those in favor, is there any discussion? All those.
I was thinking second, I was second.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. And we will wait patiently for our, I assume, to.